So we have to, we need to talk about that tonight?
Yeah, if y'all don't want to approve anything tonight, you can vote to set another meeting. Or continue listening until that day.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight is Tuesday.
Twenty-eighth is a Wednesday, twenty-seventh is-
Yeah, twenty-seventh is Tuesday.
Is six twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Right now, my wife doesn't have anything on the calendar.
I know Daniel was in favor of doing that.
Yeah. And him and, him and Tanya both said they were available that day, so.
Are we just gonna wait and bring that up at the end of the discussion and see?
Yes, sir, I, I figured I'd mention it during my-
Okay.
Report and just say, because really, you, you all could just continue the public hearing to that date. Just do it that way, rather than having to do a separate item or anything.
And if there's a tie on- Any motion denied, it fails.
That's correct. And if there's, if there's not two more to show up, we don't even have a meeting, so.
Hmm, yeah. Were you at Popper Sunday?
No, we were camping.
Okay.
But Christina did watch the recording, and said it was like a ninety-nine percent vote.
Yeah, I, I think it was ninety-six.
Or ninety-six.
Yeah.
High nineties.
Yeah. Well-
There's always gonna be some, that's fine, whatever.
I don't know how many pastors has been there since I've been there, four or five, I mean, not, not like a significant amount, but- I mean, most of them we get stay ten, twenty years.
Wow.
I mean-
In the Catholic Church, that's unusual.
Most of them, we've had, have stayed down.
Five-year cycles, they try to gift you a new priest.
Yeah.
Hey, good evening.
Hey, Marty, how you doing?
Good, good.
But the last few I know that we did, there was, there's, there was always a few nays, I mean, that's just-
Yeah, that's the nature of it, right?
I, I, I know one guy told me he voted nay the, the time before, just because he wanted to say they really counted.
Oh. Something weren't built that way, right?
What'd he say?
I'm excited for her, and I, my wife and kids are really looking forward to it, too. He did the career classes on Sundays, and they were always really good, well, the handful I've been to at least.
I think he's gonna be a really big hit for your age group, and I, I mean-
Yeah, for everybody.
The older age groups too, but, I mean, you know.
Yeah, a little more connection there.
You wanna see kids, youth coming in, I mean-
That's the point, right? You need to keep that, that backlog happening.
Yeah, because the, the side dying off, I mean, that's life. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy, so.
Tommy, where are you?
Hello?
I got two mics. I guess one's turn off.
If I happen to lose my voice, y'all will have to elect somebody to take over. My allergies, and it just-
I say, uh, I'm struggling all day.
Longest veteran.
Today's the best day I've had voice-wise in about four days, so.
All right.
Just, just to give you fair warning, I've already told Justin.
Just taking a gavel there.
Quiet down, I got a whisper here.
We do have a closed session at the end, too, just, just so y'all know. Yeah, I was running videos Sunday, well, I wasn't run, I was doing the sound and the Facebook, the other, the young guy was actually running the video, I was in there with him. So when I'm in there, I don't always see who's out there, sometimes I do, but sometimes I don't. Depends on how many technical problems we have. Have to be careful of me, what about, squeezing it?
Have a lot for. Not sure. I never can tell. My brain's got too many people that I know from different places, so, sorry.
Okay. I didn't know.
Yeah. I, I, I sometimes can pull out names and, and, and associations, but usually I can't. Yeah, I thought she's got a wild tag going. Yep.
John saw your dad the other day in Lowe's.
Did you?
Yep.
Probably buying every pond in all they had.
He hadn't, hadn't got there yet when I saw him, he's coming in the door.
Right, we'll call the meeting to order, Town Council, Town of Bowlin Springs, June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, first item of business is adoption of the agenda. Council would look over the agenda, also consider you have a consent agenda as well.
I do have a formal question for the council on legal, um, around the YMCA presentation and potential vote into the budget. Um, my wife has accepted a job with the sports team, or the sports director, and I didn't know if I should recuse myself from the vote, potential conflict of interest, or how that might look, what the recommendation is.
So you don't, uh, it's not your direct, personal-
Right.
Financial, um, implication, I mean, who's your wife?
It's my wife, correct.
Um, okay, um.
It is a shared bank account, but-
That's true. Yeah, I, I can check the, um-
It's part-time.
Real quick on that front, if you opted not to vote, um, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that would be, since he's present, that would be an affirmative vote. Uh, so it would have to be, um, be based on the, on the, to be able to recuse yourself for that purpose, I think, I think that would be the only, um, would be the direct financial, let me, I can check on that real quick, if we can circle back around prior to that point, I'll-
Okay.
Double check.
But would that not just be a part of the budget, we don't vote on that individually, we vote on it as part of the budget package.
Correct, correct.
Okay, that is true, yeah.
And from my experience, those questions arose, and it was, as long as it's incorporated into the budget, not conflict.
Right, that's right, that's true, yes, thank you, you're right.
Okay.
If it were separate, right, if it were separate, uh, something specific, then you're right, that would be different.
Again, thank you.
Be kinda bad for you to recuse from voting on the whole budget.
Yeah, right.
That's right, so, yep.
Right, I, I would tend to agree.
No further questions, thank you.
Councilman Thomas, did you, you agree with that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, uh, I hear no questions on the agenda, I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay. Councilman Edwards, motion, Councilman Green, second. Okay, we'll vote by computer. Okay, passes unanimously, so we will continue. Uh, next order of business is public comment, do we have anyone here that would like to address council that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, it's the Gardner Web update, so we'll call Vice President Nate Evans to the podium.
Good evening, everyone, thank you again for having me on the agenda, couple of quick things to run through, uh, since the last time we met, we've had more than five hundred students graduate from the university, um, so I hope some of you were able to enjoy some of the fireworks we had for that, uh, it was actually right after the last meeting. Uh, we've also welcomed several hundred more campers to campus, so it's a little bit of a culture shock when we make that shift, um, but they're here for different music camps, things like that. Just some other updates from around campus, we have construction underway, obviously, you know about the amphitheater, um, other construction includes a complete calf renovation, for those that know campus, the DCC, um, including in the basement or the bottom floor of DCC, um, Bo's Smokehouse is being constructed, so a lot going on there. Uh, construction is a sign of a healthy town and a healthy campus, so keeping things moving there. Uh, two more things as a reminder, Chick-fil-A and Starbucks are open to the public, this is a great time to get in there, uh, the students aren't there, there aren't very many lines, or very long lines, um, so just one more option in the town for, for eatery options. And then the last thing I have, if you're a music fan or just looking for something to do on June seventeenth, uh, Carolina Crown will be having a concert at Spangler Stadium, um, it's quite the concert, um, very good quality, they practice, uh, for weeks and then host the final concert there, so just wanna extend that invite to everybody as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item of business is YMCA presentation, so Ms. Barbara Fitch.
Uh, good evening, and thank you for having us again, uh, we're always, um, glad to come and brag about the Y. We're gonna flip it a little bit, Jordan was gonna, I, I was gonna do my presentation, then Jordan Freycott was gonna do his, but, um, uh, he needs to leave, so he's gonna go ahead and do his part of the presentation, so, Jo, this is Jordan Freycott, and he is our, um, sports coordinator at Ruby.
Okay, welcome, Jordan.
Thank you so much, thank you guys for having me, um, so like Barbara said, Jordan, I'm the sports coordinator, so if you look on those packets, um, pass those out, right? Okay, if you look on your packets that we have, I have some, uh, estimations based on kinda stuff that we've had from sports, if you look at that first, um, spreadsheet there, looking at fall, so, starting top to bottom, you can see the revenue, um, and then broke that.
It's at the back of your packet.
Sorry, yeah, the back, that, that last page, it said three spreadsheets stapled together there. So if you look at that, uh, we broke down how much revenue we brought in, now that, uh, revenue is from registrations, so the cost to play and sign up, that's the total that we brought in for, um, the fall of last year, um, I use that number as a basis, and then averaging out, uh, we had, it was two hundred and fifty-eight players with that, um, somewhere around that number, and so that averaged out to forty-seven dollars on average was the cost per person. Um, so then going down to kinda what it takes for us to put on these sports, um, you can see all those things itemized there, um, and that came down to a total, uh, cost per player of about sixty-nine eighty, um, so it costs us almost twenty-three dollars more per kid, um, to put on the sports at the quality we do, um, with what we charge, uh, trying to keep those affordable. So looking down at the bottom, um, with our net profit and loss before, uh, the budget, um, you can see that number of fifty-eight hundred seventy, uh, and then after that budget, uh, you can see that number is, uh, still rather significant, but, uh, a big decrease down to only eighteen hundred compared to that fifty-eight, um, and again, a reminder of, of what, um, you know, per player, uh, that cost. Uh, it's broken down the same way for basketball, um, looking at that again, just to show, uh, we won't go through all the numbers specifically, uh, but, again, our revenue per player is on average fifty-four, uh, dollars and sixty cents, so around fifty-five, and then our cost, uh, per player is about a hundred and twenty, uh, dollars, and that's in part because if you compare the officials, um, and the staff salaries to the two, um, they're significantly more for basketball, and that's just because it takes a lot more people. Um, every basketball game has more officials, and, you know, uh, we have to do that so that, you know, they have a quality game, and then same with staff for safety reasons, and, and just putting on a quality, um, thing for the kids, uh, having everything they need, uh, it just costs more to do, um, so, and then the last season, uh, to look at, um, did an estimate for spring, and not all the, these numbers haven't all come in yet, because we're still finishing out the spring, um, I believe we have another two hundred and sixty-eight kids in our spring sports, um, but again, it's, it's the same, similar situation of we get in on average about fifty-five dollars per kid, um, but we're paying out, um, about seventy-five dollars per kid, um, and again, you can look at the net profit, uh, and the net loss, and that's big in part of, um, providing, and aiming to provide the quality that we do, uh, but trying to keep those prices low still.
You have any questions for Jordan before he has to leave, because he's, he's the know-all in that.
So the first spreadsheet is what sport?
Uh, so, that's, I did by season, so, in the fall, we have, uh, we offer volleyball, baseball, uh, flag football, as well as, I'm missing one, soccer, soccer, um, so we offer those fo- four sports in the fall. Uh, winter, we, we just do basketball, we do have indoor soccer, but this year we did it a little differently, uh, with an indoor group coming in, um, to kind of, uh, we had another league that was making competition difficult, so that was kind of a way we could pivot, um, to get people in there, uh, so that spreadsheet is just basketball, and then for spring, we offer baseball and soccer. Any other questions?
So if we take the average registration fee divided into the revenue, or, I mean, how, how many participants in all those things, is that how, how we come up with the number of participants?
Um, if you were to, to get the exact number of participants, if you were, yeah, to divide the, uh, the total revenue over the, uh, revenue per player, you would get your total number, but we sit, um, on average, if you were to average out all these three of these, it would be about two hundred and thirty-five kids, that's a rough estimate, but we sit every season, like basketball, I know we had two hundred and twenty, uh, spring right now, I know we have two sixty-eight, and the fall was around two forty, two fifty range, I don't know that one off the top of my head, but we average about two hundred and thirty or two hundred and forty kids per season.
But you don't know how many of those are residents of Town of Bowlin Springs?
Um, I could get that information, uh, I don't have it with me on hand, but I could get that.
And so generally, short of the re, short of the sponsors, it's all pay for play, the, the people sign up, they pay a registration fee, and then, uh, but the spot, the sponsorships are actually, I'm sorry, the, uh, uh, where is it? So I guess in-kind contribution where there's a scholarship, rather, so if somebody has a scholarship, do they get scholarships to play sports leagues?
Yeah, 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 and we, um, I can also give you guys those scholarship numbers, I apologize for not having those, but we do, um, we do scholarship, do plenty of scholarships, it's actually been something we've been, um, I guess improving is a good word to use, we've been increasing the amount of scholarship we've been giving out, um, in the last eight months, ten months, however long I've been here.
Yeah, that's, that's what throw me off, because there wasn't a, a figure for the fall twenty-two, but there was a, a figure for, uh, winter and for spring, so.
Oh, that would be sponsorships, yeah, we, so in fall, we didn't end up, we weren't able to get any sponsorships, that's why there's no figure there.
So if I'm doing the math right, between all three seasons, first, you know, fall twenty-two, you start out positive fifty-eight hundred, then you go negative thirteen-four, and then another negative sixty-two, and that nets you negative thirteen-eight, basically, between them all? Twenty-three seasons.
Yeah, that actually, that should be, that should be a negative on the fall for the five thousand, because we, we-
So, okay.
With the budget, we netted negative eighteen, it would be a negative five thousand on the, on the fall, so eighteen, something.
Yeah, eighteen and change, yeah. So the sports, the sports section of the Y alone is half of the request, essentially.
But there again, there again, we don't know how many of those are residents of Town of Bowlin Springs.
Right, yeah, we, we don't know that across the whole, the whole Y either, so, and I, I think Barbara's gonna probably talk about a little bit more of this, looking at the rest of her packet, so.
Any further questions?
This is much more detail, I appreciate it.
Of course, thank you guys, appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay, so, I'm gonna start, uh, my report with our membership, um, right now, uh, we've got, um, one thousand nine hundred and forty-two, uh, memberships, the units, uh, and then our members is five thousand six hundred and forty right now. Um, now, right now, we've got eighty-two units, um, that are town residents, but, um, and a, and two hundred and eighteen members, but, um, as I say on down my, my report, I've asked for a, um, town resident list, so, uh, when Justin gets that to me, I'm gonna compare it, and I, I'll have a better, uh, total for you, to, to let you know how many town residents we have, uh, at our Y. We offer a Gardner Web on campus membership, and it's, it's only twelve dollars a month, right now, we have a hundred and thirty-five active members, um, when they leave for the summer, we don't, we don't terminate their membership just because they're not living on campus, we continue it, and then they come, you know, they can use it during the summer months. We have a hundred and sixty-two units right now that receive a membership scholarship, ranging from ten percent to seventy-five percent, and I've got that there for you. Um, most of, most of them, you know, we don't give the smaller scholarships unless it's somebody that don't qualify, but we wanna help them, you know, um, anyway, then we, we could, you know, give the smaller scholarships. And then, I, I was very proud, uh, on May eighth, I was invited to the Cleveland County Board, um, the Cleveland County School Board to receive Employer of the Year Award, uh, we was chosen by the Cleveland County Schools Occupational Course of Study, and, uh, we had, they had twenty-five nominations, and, and we was one of the two picked, so I was very proud of that. They picked one from Crest and, uh, one from, um, let's see, one from Crest and one from Shelby, I think. Um, so I was honored because, um, these are kids that are placed in our Y to, for us to teach them, uh, work skills, so, um, I was very proud that we was able to get that, that award. Um, I've got a, a full report here, uh, from the library, uh, and I'll not read it all, 'cause, um, but I'll just tell you some highlights, on May eighth, um, we had mental he- health awareness, um, uh, evening that was, uh, hosted at our, uh, library, and it was called Step Up to Mental Health. Um, the event was led by Bunny Bennett, uh, she's a social worker from Crest High School, and students from various schools were invited to participate, uh, by submitting songs, poetry, uh, paintings or drawings that described what they go through while suffering, uh, through mental illness, uh, and to see those brave kids get up there and share their story, uh, it was just, it's very heartwarming. And then we, the committee was formed to judge and present awards to these participants, so it was just a really good night, and, uh, their parents was there, and, um, it, it was just good to see the kids there. And then, uh, the day, the day before Mother's Day, um, Bunny Bennett also hosted in the library, it was the, uh, third, third annual Healing for a Mother's Heart luncheon, and what she does is, uh, she invites everybody that's lost children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, friends, um, that, um, you know, has lost loved ones, and it makes it Mother's Day really hard, so, uh, we get together, and, um, because I've lost two grandchildren and a great-grandchild, so we get together and we, um, you know, we're able to tell stories and memories, and, uh, it's just, um, it's a wonderful event, and then Arvy, her husband, he's an award-winning artist, and he provides music for them, and, uh, so it's very nice. Um, and then, uh, Justin has, uh, Longino has researched, uh, replacing the story walk, uh, from where it was vandalized, and, uh, our Y has agreed to split the cost with the town, if, if everybody agrees to that, to, to replace the story walk. And then Kid Senses came from Rutherfordton in May, and, uh, the kids always enjoy that, because they have all these crazy science projects and, uh, things, you know, uh, volcanoes and things that, um, um, and things that blow up, so the kids always love that, uh, and they are set to come multiple times to the library this summer. Um, in our family department, um, this week, we've got a hundred and forty-two children registered for summer camp, um, summer camp at our Y is not a ba- babysitting service, our camp counselors are required to go through association training, as well as training at their locations, and, uh, this training is important because the counselors are expected to- to provide a safe, fun, entertaining and engaging summer for our campers. Each week, our campers are taught core values, including respect, friendship, faith, responsibility, serving, teamwork, honesty, caring, integrity, and empowerment. This YMCA is important to our community because there's a lot of parents out there that work. And when school's out, they don't have a place for their children to go. So we're proud to be there for, for these kids. And our camp, by word of mouth, has grown by sixty kids within just the last few years. It's just, we've never had these numbers before. And then I've got a typical day at camp there for you. And to be able to run the successful camp and to find a place, we got to find a place for a hundred-and-forty-two-plus kids each week. And so we have to be creative in our shared spaces. We've rescheduled gym activities for rides-in, snacks, and morning assembly. And then after that, the, the kids are dispersed and they go to different areas. But, but so we just appreciate the patience of our members and guests during this time because it's hard to, it's hard to make sure we have enough space. In the Turner Aquatic Center, it's been, it's been really, it's been really happening. The last time I was here, I told you about the little panic I had about the pool being ready. But it, it was just two days past our, the time that it was supposed to be complete. So we just had two schools that we had to reschedule. But I've got a list here of all the schools that came and the kids that came. So the lifeguards had six-hundred-and-thirty-nine kids, plus the teachers, plus the parents, with no incidences. So I was very proud of that. Our lifeguards are doing a great job. And on Memorial Day, we wasn't able to open until Memorial Day because of the weather. But we, that was the day we offered free admittance for the town residents. And we did have ten families that came out. And so we was glad to be able to serve them. And the next set day for the town residents to get in free is Labor Day, September fourth. And then I've got the pool hours there for you. In our, in second grade swim, the, our association provides second grade swim for the second graders at Springmore and Bullen Springs Elementary at no cost. So I talked to the sports coordinator or the sports director at Dover. And he told me we had two-hundred students that come through from our two schools with a value of around eleven-thousand dollars. That's what it would have cost to have, have the, if they had paid for swim lessons. And the reason we do this is because we want to make sure that if children are found in an emergency situation, that, that they could at least keep themselves from drowning, keep their heads above water. And so that's, that's the main goal. If they don't learn how to swim, you know, at least they can learn the fundamentals. And then web stock, we had nine staff that offered to work the event. And the payroll cost for that was like around five-hundred-and-forty dollars. And we're glad to do that. And we're, you know, we're willing to do it again. The Kids Zone is our sweet spot. We, we know how to handle kids, so we'll be glad to help with that in the future. And then Music on Main. Last year, I had a couple of staff that worked it. And I'm willing to, to get any, any kind of staffing that you need for that as well. So if you'll just let me know. We're still actively trying to get certified for our food program so we can distribute food in our communities. So hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll be certified to do so. And the scholarships, as, as of today, so far this year, we've given out twenty-five thousand in membership and program scholarships. So that's part of Jordan's presentation too, but we don't have it broken down. But we can, I can do that for the next one. And in staffing, we have eighty-nine employees on payroll so far this summer. Twenty-two of them have been hired since May because we've got our summer camp staff and, and our aquatic staff. And I've got the breakdown there for you too. And we're still hiring. We've, we've still got some that we've got to get in payroll. So in 2022, our payroll, including benefit and taxes, was totaling four-hundred-and-sixty thousand that went back out into our community. And then I've just got, just, just for fun, I've got an average day at the YMCA. You can see sort of what we, we go through. I'll let you read that later. And then we've got association participants, the ethnic, thank you, background, and the gender background that we've got there for you. And then Alan slipped me a side note. From last year to this year, we're up, last year, the total people coming in our building that scanned in was like a hundred-and-three-thousand-six-twenty. And this year, it's one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-nine-oh-five so far. So it's up twenty-one-point-five percent. So we're proud of that. The, it, it's happening and it's hopping. And we're just trying to keep, catch up or keep up. You have any questions for me? I know that's a lot.
Excuse me. Any questions? I'll be right back.
Sure, please.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
I apologize. I've had trouble speaking this week and it's catching up with me. Well, any questions for Barbara? And we appreciate your report. It was very good. Okay, we will. Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is our consent agenda. I'm going to open up with Justin for a few comments on that. And then we'll allow questions and comments from council before we seek a motion.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to mention that the, the cost allocation policy is a policy that we're required to adopt for ARPA funds. The policy itself came from the school of government. But Ms. Allen, myself, and Mr. Schweppe all reviewed it to make sure that we were good to go. And so we, we recommend approval of that. And then the, the next item is the Safe Streets for All Grant Agreement. You all will recall that we applied for the Safe Streets for All Grant, and we were awarded that earlier this year. This is just the paperwork that accepts the funds from the federal government and gets the ball rolling on the, on the grant project. So we look forward to getting started on that.
Okay. Any questions from council on any consent agenda items? I know that does include your special April twenty-fifth minutes and then our regular minutes from May the second. They're hearing no questions. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilman Thomas made the motion and second from Councilman Green. So we'll vote by computer. Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. Regular business, item number twelve, review audit contract proposals. We'll turn that over to Justin.
Thank you, sir. Every year, we have to complete an audit in accordance with the general statutes. We sent out an RFP on May tenth of this year to five specific firms and then just broadly to general listservs. We received a renewal contract from our current auditor, Darrell Keller and Associates. And then we received one proposal from Misty Watson. And we did have another response, but it was from a firm that said they weren't going to respond. They didn't have the staff to, to take on any more clients at this time. So in, included in your packets is a comparison that Ms. Allen put together of the two, two firms and the two audit services that they would, would give to us. Staff is, is recommending that we stay with our current auditor, Darrell Keller. We feel like it's a, it's a more thorough audit. They have a bigger team. They are going to perform a more in-depth audit. And for the extra cost of three-hundred dollars, we feel that that would be more beneficial to us. There's a lot of concerns out there with getting audits in on time and completed. And we've had a, a good track record with Mr. Keller and feel like he's still able to provide a higher level of service than, than Ms. Watson may be able to. Ms. Allen's also here if you have any questions for her, but that's our recommendation.
Any questions from council? I mean, I thought the proposal was good. I kind of have some of the same concerns as Justin and staff that the other proposal, they don't, they don't have a very large staff. That, that brings some concern, getting it done on time should something happen.
Well, I think Mr. Keller has been really easy to work with. I think he works well with our staff. He knows our town. He's done audits in the past. And he's also been very straight with us about what we need to strengthen and improve as far as our financials. So having said that, I'll make a motion to approve the audit contract for Darrell Keller, CPA.
Should I get that motion?
A motion, counsel. Councilman Thomas, second. Councilmember Green. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote by computer. There we go. Okay, all votes are in and unanimously passed to stay with Darrell Keller for the audit. Thank you. Next item for business is consider sewer extension policy. I think Mr. Sontag is going to comment on that one.
Thank you all very much for having me up here tonight. Before I really get started, I just want to say, give you my sincere thanks for allowing me to come here as a LEAF North Carolina Fellow. This will be my final council meeting as a fellow. My contract's ending on June thirtieth. I really appreciate it of the faith that you put into the program and the faith that you had in me. I know it's a big step, maybe bringing in a recent college graduate into these roles. But I think that we've really been able to accomplish a lot last year, this past year. And I really appreciate being allowed to be a part of that. So, thank you. With that said, this has been a big one since the very beginning. Since I've got here, we've been thinking about it. And I, I think staff feels really good about what we have been able to bring in front of you tonight. I had a little printout that I made for you here, kind of a cheat sheet, so you said, so we can avoid a little bit of the redundancy perhaps of going over what we've already talked about. Here I have the five major steps that this process is going to entail. There's a sixth, actually. That is the statutory requirements that we had the school of government prepare for us. We worked with one of their experts over there for that. But that is all kind of set in stone and that, that we just have, going off of their recommendations as far as that language goes. And I will move through this as however quickly we think is necessary and we can stop and talk about any steps. But between the last time that we spoke about this and now, what we really wanted to do was just iron out the specifics of the process. We deliberately built in a good amount of, it's a little redundant at times. We wanted to make sure that there were lots of opportunities to make sure that everybody was on the same page, considering the large costs that most of these projects will entail for residents. To get started out, the petition process is the same. The only shift there was we went from a lineal feet frontage to just a base parcel amount. So, I mean, there's small changes like that in the language, but functionally, that's remained the same. So we get to the point, we pass this, we get an application. Staff will review the application. Clerk will come, the clerk will come in front of y'all and certify that it's sufficient. And what we mean by that is, you know, we're going to make sure that two neighborhood representatives are mentioned in the application to serve in a later stage. What we've added in this time, kind of going off of some of the comments that we had in our public meeting, we've included an option for them to request additional infrastructure improvements if we wanted to do it all at once. So curb, gutter, sidewalks, those types of things. We have just broadened the scope of what the application can include, but functionally, it remains the same. After the clerk comes in front and tells you all, you know, everything's in order. We have the seventy-five percent. At least we are able to move forward. You will determine the reasonableness of the project. And I emphasize that because next is going to be the feasibility of it. But then again, that's a little bit of the redundancy that we wanted to have in here. If you determine that it is reasonable, and we're going to base that off of the availability of funds for contracting with an engineer, public works workload, because I would imagine that they'll be a part of that, the potential to secure easements. If, if kind of the CIP doesn't look very possible, we might have to have more discussions about, is it worth contracting at this point? Or do we need to do steps in between? And then finally, to catch all, any other good and sufficient reasons that council could decide that they wanted to move forward or not, that, that would happen at the meeting that we certify the application at. If you determine that it's reasonable, we will contract with an engineer to review the project, estimate the final total cost, and they will propose potential sewer line routes. We thought it would be best if we would have several different routes. Again, thinking about the potential cost and the ability to maybe get easements and kind of coming up with the best way to go about making it actually happen. Again, we wanted to leave the cost of the engineer out of the assessment. That would be levied once the work was actually completed. We thought that that was the best way to, you know, it'd be good for us to have those plans, even if we decide not to go forward with the project. And if we didn't construct the project, we would not be able to levy the assessment in the first place. So we want to include language that, you know, we would take on that cost kind of regardless of the outcome of later steps. Once we contract with the engineer, the, Justin or, or his designee will present the findings to council. We will determine if the project is feasible at this point. Again, you know, do we have available funds? Is this the best way to go about doing this? Is it time to move forward with this project? If you determine that it is a feasible project, you will order the, the meeting of the Petition Review Committee. So now you remember that we had the neighborhood representatives earlier. We wanted to just make sure that we had one more meeting before we, you know, really went forward with this, secured the loan and go about doing the project and started to ultimately charge them for this work, that we could get everyone in a room together one more time and just go over the project again. So this meeting, this Petition Review Committee was made up of the mayor, two council members, the town engineer that we contract with, the public works director, and at least two of those neighborhood representatives. They will review the project and they will provide preliminary approval or denial of the project based on the ability to go about installing the line of the preferred sewer line route. That would be a part of the meeting. They would, from the options, kind of determine what they would be most willing to do from an easement perspective. If the whole neighborhood says, yeah, put it through the back of my yard. Let's go with that cheaper option. This would be the chance to let us know that that's the route that they would prefer to go. It would also include a written assurance that residents understand the nature of assessments, that once we go down this path, there's, there's not too many more options to go for, to get out of it. There is a period to withdrawal in, between the preliminary assessment role and the final assessment role. But that's a little bit in the weeds with the statutory requirements. And they will justify, provide a written justification of the costs to be shared by the town. So we have wording in there that public, you know, facilities installed for public use. So like an oversized line or we want to have additional fire hydrants or anything of that nature. We may be willing to share the cost of that. And so if they come back and say, based on these factors, we think we should pay for sixty percent or seventy percent or the whole hundred percent of the project, this will be an opportunity for them to make that appeal to council. Like I said, they will provide preliminary approval or denial of the project, subject to those conversations. They'll come back. They'll come back. The town manager will present the recommendation to council, and you will make final project approval or denial. And upon approval, that would initiate the special assessment process in accordance with Article 10 of the, of Chapter 160A of the general statutes. And that is towards the back of the ordinance presented in front of you. We'd care Malonzi from the school government, help us with that. And we're all very confident that's an order, and I can go a little bit more into the weeds with that with y'all if you'd like, but we're pretty much, our hands are tied, basically at that point. There is an ability to withdraw from the proposal. We added language that if 50 percent of the neighborhood, between the preliminary assessment role and the preliminary assessment resolution, the final assessment resolution, they would have a period of 14 days to withdraw. That's another statutory requirement, we have to offer that. And we added that it's at a 50 percent rate. And those are the, those are the major changes here. As I said, we're very pleased with what we've been able to come up with, and I wanted to extend this to you all, that Karen Malonzi mentioned that, you know, there's not many towns our size considering this issue, and she was very complimentary of our... She said generally towns just end up in a problem, in a crisis, whereas we're thinking about it a little bit in advance. So I wanted to extend that to you all as well.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Very thorough. I'm very impressed with all the decision gates. And maybe it's just how, maybe I'm naive in the statutes, but how do we protect ourselves from potentially conflict resolution and, you know, the minority, the 25 percent or 20 percent that did not vote for it and tries to pursue us to stop it even though the majority and council aligned with the project?
I think there's language in the statutes that allows for someone like that to appeal the decision, but it goes to, it's not a superior court, but it's some sort of court.
There are remedies for them in the, I can't remember the exact language. Justin and I were speaking about it the other day.
It's a general court.
Yeah, they're able to go for a general court and make an appeal of it. But I think that would be more in cases where we're doing something wrong.
Right.
Rather than them not liking the decision that's being made.
Right.
Again, that's part of why we have so many steps in between, so that we would kind of know that's happening before.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna hear those people upfront, right?
Absolutely.
We have several excellent decision gates, I think, and, yeah, I think we're doing a great job with it, just thinking about those outlier situations as well.
And I will also mention, part of the statutory requirements, we are required to hold a number of public hearings in between preliminary assessment resolution and the final assessment resolution. We have to do that. They say that we have to send it by first-class mail to all the parcels affected, a notice of it, and so there's some very specific language that they have to make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on. So no one's, no one's gonna be blindsided, oh, I thought this died X number of months ago, and now you're telling me it's still going forward. And there are two, two sets of those, between those resolutions and the final assessment role, but that's when the work is completed.
And to your point, sir, we've built in those extra Petition Review Committee steps and everything, so there's additional review steps too that'll handle a lot of that.
And I will also say, the school government even said that perhaps we should maybe remove some of those, in a matter of efficiency, but we thought that was important to, you know, we were Charlotte and we wanted to kind of get these projects through quickly. We might not have as many steps or as many opportunities to go over these issues. We also put a 50 percent withdrawal, which is not statutorily required. Once we get further down the line, it's a lower ceiling for them to get out of the project than it is for them to initiate it.
Okay.
Which we thought was reasonable, but is not statutorily required.
Excellent.
It's a lot of good work, man. I appreciate you working on it. What about the engineering cost? Where would that come from?
We would have to, we'd have to determine that at the time a project's submitted. So that's something that we could start to budget for and have a fund for. That's something that we could appropriate from fund balance or from grant funding or from ARPA funds or something like that. So it would just depend on the timing.
Right. And just for public notification, we did have three meetings, three open meetings on this. What, two in person and one online?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we posted about it on the, on the social media pages to try and, yeah, drum up input.
Well, we had decent turnout for the first meeting, but nobody showed up for the second and third meeting.
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay.
We did share the information from the first meeting with one or two HOA associations as well, so.
Right. Has anybody come forward with a request?
No, I've gotten a few, kind of just random questions about it, but nothing, nothing that's been, that they're ready to move forward and nothing that was, you know, an in-depth meeting or anything like that.
Well, I think it's something council has been discussing for a number of years, and this at least gives us a policy and steps that we can follow. I think it's well thought out. Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to say that I think you've done a super job on this project and other projects.
Thank you.
I think you're to be commended for the way you hit the ground running, and I think you will be missed.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sure not by us as much as by these folks, because I know from talking with them that you've really done a super job for us, and we're glad you chose to come here.
Absolutely. It's been a really wonderful year. I've loved having all these opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the policy as presented?
I move the policy to be approved as presented.
I'll second it.
So motion from Councilmember Green, second from Councilmember Edwards, and we're ready to vote. Any other questions before we vote? Ready to vote? Okay, the next item of business is Park Master Plan Steering Committee Appointment. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Longino.
Thank you, sir. This sounds familiar. I think at the last meeting, we had a land use plan stakeholder committee appointment, but we've got two plans going on at the same time, so I want to have two different steering committees to get those different perspectives. A little bit of overlap with some of those, but what you have in front of you is a recommendation for a steering committee for the park plan. I won't go down the whole list there, but we've got some staff and then some prominent stakeholders, either own property or members of the community that could be affected by it. I am looking for one or two council members to serve on the steering committee as well, so just depending on the number of you all that want to participate, I'd love to have one or two of you there. The mayor is agreeable to serving on the committee, and we would ask that you just appoint those, and they'll have their first meeting next Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. It'll be a virtual meeting, if that helps.
Let's see. What's the roadmap? Is that the regular, is it gonna be monthly meetings? Is it gonna be bi-weekly?
That may be the only meeting. So there would be potentially another meeting in a few months when they have a draft planned together, but it would also be virtual. And this one's expected to take about an hour.
Next one's at 11:00, you said?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm interested, but I don't know that I can make that kickoff meeting.
Do we have anybody else with interest?
I'd be interested. I don't know, on the other one, is that a conflict for me to be on both?
No, sir.
I'd be happy to yield to Tommy if he wants to take us.
Well, I mean, we have two.
We can have two.
We can have two.
Yeah, I'd be happy to join Tommy as well.
Okay. We pushed it back a little bit. Would that help you to 11:30 or 12:00 or?
Uh, let's see. 12:00 would work if I was able.
Okay, I can check on 12:00.
I can do 12:00 or 12:00.
Okay, I'll check on that. If you want to, yeah, both be appointed on there, and then we can work through that.
So any further discussion? So do we have a motion to appoint Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Green to the Park Master Plan Steering Committee?
I'll make that form of a motion and to include the list that's been prepared for us.
Thanks, sir.
Is that good? I think one of them's up to second it.
Do I need to name all these people? Okay.
I'll second that then. I would agree, I second. So motion from Councilmember Thomas, second from Councilmember Litten. Any further discussion? Who are ready to vote? And moving on to the next item of business is consideration of fiscal year 2324 budget. And we're going to open a public hearing on that. So we will open the public hearing at 7:19. So this time, is there anyone to make comment on the budget? So we have no comments, no public comments on the budget, so we'll close the, declare the meeting closed at 7:20. Okay, we'll call on Town Manager Longino for comments on the budget.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to give a brief overview. We've had a couple of meetings on this, and just to sort of recap those meetings and give some insight for the public. The manager's proposed budget for this year includes a one-cent tax increase that generates about $33,000 in revenue for the town and costs the average taxpayer around $20 per year. Based on feedback at the last two council meetings, though, where we've had budget discussions, we've included options in your packet for a one-cent increase, a half-cent increase, and no increase. You have the budget ordinances in there that have the totals for the different departments and the total budget, but I didn't include the full budget. You just have those total numbers for reference. So we've discussed the, more of the specifics in our previous meetings, but again, to kind of go through some of the recaps. We met in March to develop our strategic plan for the year. There were six priorities with about a dozen objectives of those, most of which required some level of funding. So if we want to continue to push those plans forward, we've got funds for those in the proposed budget. This past year, we increased salaries. The salary study that we went through brought about an increase for some of our staff and for council. And as those costs increased, so did the need to try and recruit and retain employees. It's a problem that everybody's facing these days. So as a result of that, we've added additional increases and benefits in the budget to stay competitive so that we don't lose good people and can attract more of the same caliber. We don't have a lot of new items for me to highlight in the budget. Many of the departmental items stayed the same, but the cost of these items increased. The best reference I've got is last year alone, we spent about $8,000 on garbage truck tires, which is more than we've ever spent on garbage truck tires. But the price of tires has gone up, and that's something that, you know, it's a service that we provide that we have to buy accessories for. So we have the opportunity to do, you know, we always have the opportunity to do, to do more with less in a small town. The proposed tax increase proportionally affects different taxpayers, but it also tries to keep us on track from an inflationary perspective, so they're not working to try and play catch-up. City of Kings Mountain, I believe, this year is proposing a five-cent tax increase, because they are playing catch-up. Talked a lot about additional growth and development in the coming years, and, you know, personally, I feel that we'll see the tax base grow in the coming years, but we won't see those funds realize until after that development has occurred and those taxes are assessed. So what we always try to do is be proactive and take a proactive stance, be nimble, and be prepared. So that's what we've tried to do with this budget. Again, we've got some different options for you all to consider with some different items to cut if you also choose to back off of that one-cent tax increase. And I also wanted to mention, since we are missing one council member and the mayor, that you all have the option of tabling this item until a later date. The last Tuesday in June has historically been a date that we've, that we've used to adopt the budget as well, and the mayor and Councilmember Gant are both available on that Tuesday if you also chose to wait for that.
Personally, I think that's what we should do. I think we should table the motion until June 27th, when we can have full council. I think it's an important item, and I think if I were Councilman Gant, that I'd want to be present. Although the mayor can't vote, he can offer input, so, but, so I would, I would make the motion that we table this until June 27th.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Green. I have one point of order there. Would it be considered a continuance or table?
You closed the public hearing, so it would be... They re-advertize for that meeting.
Okay. So is it, is it proper for us to table it until the 27th? Okay.
We have enough time legally to properly advertise that.
I think we've already met that requirement, haven't we not?
Yes, sir. We've met the requirement for advertising the budget, and we would have enough time to advertise that meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the motion to table.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Edwards.
I'd say 6:30.
I think it was 6:30.
I didn't include that in my motion. Table it until June 27th, 6:30 p.m.
I'll second that.
So the motion on the floor is to table fiscal year 2324 budget until June 27th. Call meeting June 27th at 6:30 p.m. Any further questions? Comments? Here none, then we shall vote. One second, I want to get my papers back in line. Next item of business is manager comments.
Thank you, sir. I have just a few things. I'll start off with, the mayor just texted me and said he's watching and he's good for June 27th. So I wanted to mention, just to let everybody know, that you may have noticed that we got a new roof on Town Hall this past week. We had some shingles that were coming off and some other, some other damage from hail and some other different things. There've been some repairs done in the past, but when the insurance adjuster and the roofing company came out and assessed it, they said they would cover the cost of the new roof. So, the new roof didn't cost, didn't cost us anything. The insurance paid for it, so just wanted to put that out there for everybody. We are working on a credit from Duke Energy for our recently installed electric vehicle charging stations. They offer a credit on top of the grant award that we got, so we're hopeful that we can get a little more back from the electric company. Let's see, we met with, well, Mr. Jabert met with Duke Energy about lights on North Main Street and on West College. I have an email from them that I'll send out to you all on my Friday recap, but they recommended just a couple of spots to add additional lights, but said that the lights that we have there currently are sufficient for lighting the area and that any changes or additions would not, would not really add anything to that. So we're gonna have one or two changes, but for the most part, those lights are gonna be staying the same. Wanted to mention that before, right before Memorial Day, I spoke to the owner of the Roosters property, and he had reached out to the gas company or finally gotten in touch with the gas company, and they were going to have the line shut off within 72 hours. And that was the Friday before Memorial Day, so I'm sure that probably ended up happening the following week, which would have been last week. So I haven't, haven't spoken to him this week, but expected that work to get completed based on what he said. And I know I've shared the rendering with a couple of y'all, I'm not sure if I've shared it with everyone, but he has hired an engineering firm to do plans to, or they've made the plans to rebuild that Roosters building into a restaurant. He's got the layout and everything set in there, so he's trying to, trying to work through moving those lines and then getting a small addition built onto the back for some storage or restrooms before they can actually put the roof on it and move forward with that. So it's something that, that the final product, at least from what I've seen in those renderings, is something that we would want in our community and I think would add value. I know it's been a long, drawn-out process. I know it's been a, a long, drawn-out process. We're going to continue to stay on top of them and just try and push that forward so that hopefully we've got another place to eat and another source of, of tax and sales revenue coming into town at some point. Speaking of extra revenue coming into town, I've heard, I've confirmed it, that you can go after this meeting and get a margarita at El Acapulco. They had, had applied for their liquor license a few months ago and have been working towards that. So I believe that's our first establishment in town that's, that's taking advantage of that referendum that was passed last year. We have an ongoing 30-day step challenge with the, with the Town Hall staff and a couple of the council members. The goal is to get 5,000 steps per day through the month of June, and we're going to start totaling up the weekly totals this week to see where everybody's at. And at the end, we'll draw some prizes for everybody that gets their step goal and, and has, has kind of taken that, that healthy initiative. So I know I've, let's see, yep, I've hit my 5,000 for the day, so.
I have 6,998.
Okay, all right. That's been a good dose of healthy competition around Town Hall. And we already talked about it, but I did want to mention that it is Mr. Sontag's last meeting and just echo what everybody already said about, about the great work that he's done. He will definitely be missed. I don't know who's going to pick up all the slack when he leaves, but we really appreciate him coming in and, and getting a lot of these, these things accomplished, whether it's sewer extension policy or a new online permitting system and all the different things that he's worked on. But he's been a great addition to the team. So that's all I got.
Do, do we have a way of giving feedback to the school of government about how valuable that was for us?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there'll be an end of, end of course evaluation, so to speak, when, when he's up, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe it's something that you could share with the council, so we can either send an email or a letter of just support, because, I mean, it's been a really phenomenal opportunity.
Yeah, I think a letter would be great. We could put something together for that.
We don't want to build them up too big.
Hopefully, we'll get another.
We may have to move somewhere else.
We'll get another fellow maybe later on. I mean, what, what would be our opportunity to, to participate in the fellow program more?
Yeah, we're, we're able to apply for it and continue to be put on the list. It's, it's in its, it's either entering or leaving its fifth year, so it's, it's kind of gaining in popularity. I think they're getting more and more applications, so it's getting more competitive, but we'll definitely keep trying to be involved in it.
May not ever get another Sontag, but we, we'll at least get something closer.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Another, another, along that same line, I think one of the things, the benefits that we hope would get from that was see the value in having somebody in that position.
Yes, sir.
And I think if anything, it's that, that has proven to be true. And I think in discussions with you, that you would, you would echo that.
Absolutely.
And that was one of the goals that we had, you know, give us a trial basis. Also gives us an opportunity to look at whoever's sitting here, you know, see if they might be somebody we wanted to keep or we wanted to ship out, and I'm not sure where that's going to fall, but I, I think I'm pretty, pretty sure. But, so I think it's been a good, good process, a good decision that we made, I think, to follow through with that, so. And I guess, I'm in my comments now, I guess. The only other thing I'd have is that Town Manager and I attended the Foothills Regional Meeting today for lunch. We didn't, we approved budgets and mostly that, and just got a, and in a conversation with, one of the things we'd talked about was affordable housing and joining the HUD program. And I think he did say that in the new budget year that we possibly, that we would be able to join. Is that correct?
So HUD only allows new members in every, I think it's three years. So we wouldn't actually be able to enter into sometime next calendar year, because they run on the federal fiscal year, which is a little different from ours, but.
I think that needs to be on our radar big time, you know, with affordable housing. So I'm glad we're going to join in that, that program, and I hope we'll see a lot of benefit from it. That's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Marty Thomas.
Yeah, you stole my thunder on the school of government and Sontag, so thank you. It's been a great work there. Second thing is, thank you to the YMCA. I wanted to make three comments about the YMCA. First of all, it's the economic engine for our town. So thank you for fighting, for providing those jobs and for providing, second of all, a community center for everybody. I mean, it's from seniors to kids and everybody in between. And then the third part of that is a travel destination. So I appreciate the YMCA and the partnership, and I hope to continue that moving forward in the future. But, and thank you for the presentation tonight. And again, thank you to the staff. I know everybody's working as hard as they can and for the materials I've prepared. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Caleb Edwards.
Well, Councilman Green and Thomas said it so well, so nice work to both parties back there. I really appreciate your inputs there, Mr. Sontag, and well done. And Barbara, thank you for bringing a lot more information to the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. And I, I concur. I appreciate the, the reports. It was a lot of good information. Gordon Webb being here, Grayson, we, it's been a pleasure to have you working with us. We certainly wish you well in your future endeavors. I was able to attend the GCL MPO. Mr. Green serves on that board, and I'm the alternate. And I've talked with Mr. Longino. And in June, there's an opportunity for citizens to give public input for projects. And that's pedestrian, bicycle, car, vehi- vehicular. You don't get that opportunity often, so Mr. Longino's going to share that information. But should anyone have or want additional information, they can email me or Mr. Longino, and we can get you the link, and it takes you to a forum, and it's fairly simple. I know of one person that has already put their project in, and it shouldn't, it probably takes 10 minutes. You know, maybe you think a roundabout should go in this particular area, or a stoplight needs to be put in that particular area. You can get, get your idea before the GCL MPO, which eventually ends up in the DOT, and they go through a prioritization of how they come up with which projects can be awarded with what funds they have. So I just wanted to get that word out to the general public. And that was all the comments that I had, and I thank each one of you. And the last item of business that we have is a closed session. So motion to enter closed session per NCGS 143-318.11A5.
Motion to enter the closed session.
So I have one motion to enter closed session.
He needs to state all that in his motion.
Second.
I second that.
We have a second. So all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion passes.
And your voice held out, so you can't, can't say much more.
I had a one session there. I had to leave. I couldn't hug anymore.
I was looking to make sure I didn't see you going out towards your vehicle out there.
You didn't say AED, you didn't say CPR, you just said.
You need to hold it up for me.
I need a minute.
That made me think. I have been to county, does anybody remember Ralph Gilbert?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who it is.
The county commissioner?
Yeah, yeah.
I've been, you know, when I was on the school board, go to the meetings every once in a while. He would literally, during the meeting, get up.